All right, it looks like we are live. I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for July 20th, 2020. City Attorney Kremp has said that she will be leading the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to do our city's business. We thank you that each one is well and able to be with us tonight. We just want to pray your blessings upon our police and firefighters and our military, Lord. We pray for their safety always. We pray that you will give us all wisdom tonight to do your will and to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight, Lord. We pray for our community, that we would just have unity among us and that we would each try to serve each other, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes from July 6th, regular city council meeting. Y'all have been provided a copy of that. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve from Councilmember Vapurzan and a second from Councilmember Scott. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment cards to read later on?
No, we do not.
Thank you. So from there, we will go on to the financial statement. Let me go ahead and bring in Ms. Mathis. Liz, are you there?
Can you hear me there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and you can see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, wonderful, thank you. So quick summary tonight, starting out looking at our general fund revenues. Our county millage taxes are still over budget year-to-date and slightly behind the prior year. Franchise fees are slightly behind their budget year-to-date, no change from prior year, which to me means that the timing of receipts is not an even, you know, 12-month spread, but it looks like we should be in line for the year. State turnback funds are trending slightly behind budget and slightly behind the prior year. I'm gonna do a little bit more research into that, but it's not so far off that it's overly concerning at this point in time. Our city sales tax, excuse me, county sales tax is slightly ahead of our budget and $93,000 more than the prior year. All of these sales taxes represent taxes collected during the month of April. Our city sales tax is ahead of budget year-to-date and about $259,000 ahead of our prior year. And our police and fire departments both, you can see that they're under budget year-to-date, but over the prior year, and as we've discussed a few weeks ago, that under-budget year-to-date that we're seeing there is related to those lot fee turnback funds that will come in in July. So next time we talk, we should not be looking at those numbers being under budget. We should have that for the year. Parks and Recreation, Senior Wellness, they are under budget for the year. That's to be expected since they were closed for several months. And then again, that federal grants, that's that FEMA funds that we expect to stay that way for the rest of the year or being under budget since the majority of the project won't be reimbursed until either late this year or next year, based on the timing of that project. We did, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, but you can see then that the police and fire fund transfers have now been made and are current through the end of June. And we'll be able to make those transfers every month now, so that everything looks as budgeted and we can keep on top of that moving forward. On the general fund expenses or expenditure side, I kind of made a general note here, we're trending under budget year-to-date in almost every department, except for Public Works, and I talked about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to be working with HR. We reallocated some funds in 2020 when we approved the budget for Public Works employees and whether they're working in streets or whether they're working in Public Works and things like that, and what it looks like is that maybe that didn't get all the way through to the accounting software, those changes, and so we just may have to reallocate some funds. You'll see on the street side that they're well under budget. We're on the Public Works side, we're over budget, and so we're going to dig into that a little bit more. This is just that, that chart that shows your general fund spending by category. No major changes in there. It stays pretty uniform from the trends that I've seen in looking through it. Your street fund revenue and expenditures, I was able to put all of those on one screen here. And you can see that again, the county millage tax and the state turnback funds, everything's trending the same way it is in the general fund. The county millage taxes are over budget year-to-date but slightly behind the prior year. And your state turnback funds are also slightly ahead of budget in the prior year, which is always nice. And then that's where you'll also see on the expenditure side down here, under personnel, you can see that they're $116,000 under budget year-to-date, so that more than compensates for the over-budget on the general fund side. So once we get that worked out, we should have a better picture of where we're at with that. Looking then at our sanitation funds, our sanitation fees are slightly behind budget but right in line with the last year. And our expenses here, the personnel expenses are also under budget in the sanitation fund, and that may be the same situation that we have with streets is, you know, where they're working in streets or sanitation or Public Works, and I know they move employees around a lot in that based on where the need is greater today, and so trying to get those allocations cleaned up there. And then our last fund, of course, is our police and fire fund. This is the revenue and expenditure, so this is where you can see that everything we have taken in for that half-cent city sales tax for police and fire has now been transferred to the general fund for police and fire as it was budgeted to be done for 2020. And it is trending slightly, just like the the sales tax in the general fund, you'll see that it is it is slightly over budget year-to-date, and this fund is new, so you don't see a prior year comparison, but it's also a little bit higher than last year as well. And that's all I have for you today.
Great, well, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council members?
Motion to approve this budget.
I've got a motion to approve from Councilmember Vapurzan.
Second.
Second. And a second from Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Scott, I saw your hand up.
All I was going to do was congratulate Liz on putting the comments there. You know, a lot of times those were made verbally to us, and then we kind of went back later, we didn't have that for reference, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. If there's, I may continue to expand some of the comments on the summary page to help point out those high points as we move through this.
Good.
Great, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to accept the financials. Last call for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Mathis. All right, the next order of business is the procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So offered.
We had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. First item under unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance 1008, amending section 94-9 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
The City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1008, and ordinance amending section 94-9 of the Mammell City Code to permit the mayor or his or her designate to apply to the Mammell Planning Commission for amendments to chapters 94 of the Mammell City Code, and any regulations, and for other purposes.
Thank you for, just to remind everyone, this is the ordinance that would allow myself or city staff to begin the proceedings to have the zoning code changed. That still needs to go through the planning commission and then to the city council, but of course, before any ordinances were accepted. If there is no
Ordinance 1008.
Second.
Outstanding. We've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1008. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Holt. Unmute yourself, Councilmember Holt. Um, Councilmember Vapurzan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Could you hear my voice when I heard you said yes?
Yes, sir, I did, yes.
Okay, all right, wasn't sure, thank you.
All right, the next order of business is the third reading of ordinance 1009, amending the Mammell zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance 1009, and ordinance amending Mammell zoning map, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve, 1009.
Second.
All right, I have a motion second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gartner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is on to new business, which is the first reading of ordinance 1013, enacting supplemental provisions of city code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
And ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1013, and ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the Mammell City Code for the City of Mammell, providing the manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
Thank you very much. So this is a pretty routine ordinance that we pass. As y'all know, when y'all pass ordinances, they don't just magically become part of the city code. We send them off to get codified, and I believe this includes up through June, is that right, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, it's through ordinance number 1007.
Great. And are these already posted on the city muni code?
No, they're not.
Okay. So do we so can we get a copy of supplement 15 then?
Once the council approves this, that's when we'll have supplement 15. We're through 14.
Right, but I mean, so is there a way that they can see supplement 15 before they approve it?
I'm sure there's a way. We've never done that before, but we certainly can start that.
It's normally posted on the muni code already, but we could take a peek at that. Was there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Unless, did I see someone raise their hand? No? Okay. The next order of new business is resolution 2020-17, agreement with NPP Gov. to purchase splash pad equipment. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that resolution by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2020-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Mammell with NPP Gov., the Government Division of National Purchasing Partners, as well as governmental agreement with a lead public agency directing the City of Mammell to prepare such documents as necessary and to take such steps as necessary to enter into a cooperative purchasing contract with NPP Gov. and for other purposes.
All right, so this is a, we've done similar resolutions like this in the past. This allows us to go through a third-party vendor who has already accepted bids on different products and allow us to purchase the splash pad equipment through or using them as the bidding entity or for the bidding process. Is there any questions, comments, discussions on this resolution?
Motion to approve resolution 2020-17.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve resolution 2020-17. Any further debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please unmute your mics and say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. And that concludes new business for today. So I guess we'll move right on to Mayor's comments. I wanted to give a little bit of a statewide or a COVID update. Probably the biggest piece of news that we have regarding COVID is the mask mandate that came through the governor's office and the Arkansas Department of Health. And so that was enacted and put into place and became effective today. The City of Mammell will be enforcing those regulations. But primarily, what we're really hoping is that people wear masks, or if for some odd reason, the police have to get called out somewhere, that the first step we're gonna take is just to talk to them, and we'll classify that as a verbal warning. If the police have to come out a second time, that will go to a written warning, and if they have to continue to be called out on the same individual, then of course, they can look at a citation. Under no circumstances do we intend to make any arrests on individuals for not wearing a mask whatsoever. And so y'all, I think I sent you all the governor's executive order as well as a letter from myself. My position this entire time has been that we should be focused internally at what we're doing, but leave those big health decisions to the state. They're the ones with the experts. They're the ones with the data. And so they're in a much better position to be able to make those sort of health-related decisions than a city is. With that, and speaking of data, we were, the state released late last week the number of cases on a city-by-city breakdown, and that was through July 9th. And I don't have the numbers pulled up in front of me, but I believe Mammell had 153 total cumulative cases from the beginning of the outbreak through July 9th. Now, we do know that there was at least one specific nursing home that accounts for 41 of those cases, so they had 41 residents inside that facility that were tested positive, and they had 11 workers. I don't know if those 11 workers lived here in Mammell or not, so we don't know if they are, you know, included or not included in that 153. That would go to wherever their residence is. And with that, the state hasn't released the number of deaths in the city. We do know that there was, or I have heard it on good authority that there was about a dozen deaths at that single nursing home. I've heard of other possible deaths that may be associated, but the state hasn't released that information to us, so I can't say for certain what those numbers are. Hopefully, we'll get better numbers as time goes on. Also, I think it's pretty important that we realize that those numbers only went through July 9th, and that's been, what, 11 days since then? And we do know that there has been an uptick in the number of addresses that we have on our caution list. So y'all may recall that police and fire are given lists of addresses that they need to take additional precautions on in the event that they have to respond to that address. But those addresses don't necessarily contain people who have tested positive for COVID-19. It could be people who've tested positive. It could also be folks who are quarantined, and in any case, it's those addresses in particular that our first responders are supposed to take extra precaution. We know that list hovered around six or seven for quite a while and is now up to 34 addresses on that list. So we do expect those numbers to increase, and I would just encourage everyone strongly to wear a mask. When you go out in public and you can't properly social distance, provided that you don't have, you know, some sort of health condition that would prevent that or any of the other exceptions. With that, I'd like to open the floor for any questions or for COVID-19-related discussion at this time. I don't see anyone jumping out of their seats to say anything. I think we should specifically address the, whether we're staying virtual or trying to hold a city council meeting in public. Impression I got from the council previously is they want to continue on virtually. And so unless and until I hear more feedback from the city council, we will continue to meet virtually.
I would be happy to start meeting in person, but I'd also, you know, respect the opinions of the entire council. So if if there's still a majority that want to meet virtually, that's fine with me, but I would be comfortable, I think at some point, we have to get back to doing the business so that people can be, residents can attend the meetings in person, so I would be for resuming in person, but you know, well, I would defer to everybody else, see what everybody else thinks.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Mosley?
I was gonna ask you, how many people are tuning into this live?
Right now, I don't see that number.
There's 32, Mr. Mayor.
There we go, yeah, 32. So in some ways, we're getting more people, and that's great. What we're not getting is the ability for people to interact with us as much and for them to look us face-to-face. They can look at our faces, but we don't get to see theirs, and I think there's something powerful in that. When we do go back to meeting live, we will be doing both. We will be able to livestream onto Facebook and keep that group, but also allow people to come in in person to air their grievances with us. All right, Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I would very much be in favor of trying to get back to our live meetings and study and see what we can do to keep it as safe as possible. We know, we know what has to be done, and I believe that we've gone through this, what is it, five weeks now? Or four weeks, but nonetheless, it would be, I think that people would like to see us come back and do that, and if we have to, feel like it's just not gonna work, come back to what we're doing now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So if, Councilmember Vapurzan?
I think we all go to Kroger. I think we could be safe. We did get back to meet even with Matt, then if, and if Councilmember Saunders doesn't feel comfortable, we could include him on a Zoom or make things safe for him so that he's comfortable, but I would be comfortable sitting at the city council chambers mask on. I'm prepared for that. Thank you.
Okay. And so I'm pausing here just to see if there's more of a consensus one way than the other. It seems like I now have three folks wanting to meet live and no one apparently wanting to continue virtually.
I don't mind meeting live.
I think, Ms. Marion, we may need to have the caution with her as well for safety purposes, but if there was a way that we could include them in the meetings, Ms. Marion.
So, thank you, John, but I would feel comfortable meeting as long as I wore masks and stayed put.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Saunders? Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I want to say this isn't all about me. I was just stating a situation at the last council meeting of people like me. I am very respiratory, you know, I'm missing half my lungs, so masks are a real problem for me, and it drops my oxygen level. Last time I checked, it was 76%, which is dang near hospital. So if everybody wants to meet live, and I would much prefer to meet live, I really would. But if we, but if I can continue on virtual, you know, and everybody else wants to meet live, I think that's great. I wish I could do that too. I just can't right now. So I just wanted to throw that in, but it's not about me, okay?
All right, here's where I think we're headed then. I think what we're gonna try and do is see if we can't meet live next time. We can have hybrid meetings, which is the ability to have some folks virtually. The downside, you may recall, is that the way our system is set up, it does, it it would mean that whoever is meeting virtually would be only able to see me. Everyone would be able to hear them, and everyone would be able to communicate with that person, but that person would only be able to see me, and I would be the only person able to see that person or multiple people. So let me look into that and see how I can go live then, and how we can make that happen, but I don't think it'll be a problem. And it looks like then we are going to aim to have a live meeting on August 3rd. That meeting will, of course, will have the audience properly social distance, and then we will be enforcing the mask mandate from the state there as well. So is that, any objections with that? Okay. Okay, finally, under Mayor's comments, I wanted to point out and remind everyone, I said this at the last city council meeting, the, there are four city council seats up for election this year. That's every, if you are living Mammell, you have a council seat that is up for election. There's still time. I believe the filing period opens, hasn't even opened yet, and And so if you are someone who's interested in getting involved, I always encourage people to get involved. Who ne- who knows, you may run for city council and then city attorney and then mayor's seat. I'll never really having planned that. So it's a great way to do that, but it's a big first step too. So if anyone has any questions or would like to talk about it, either council members here or just members of the public, I'm always happy to talk to folks and, and hope that we can have a, a, a good, healthy discussion and debate in impactful election going forward. With that, I will open it up to council member comments. Am I missing someone?
Mayor, one quick thing. Director Rayburn wanted me to let you all know that the city is saving about $8,500 on splash pad equipment by going through that purchasing agency, the NPP Gov. that we just used. So I just wanted to mention that they were saving additional dollars that way.
Got you. Thank you. Any further, anything else? Councilmember Saunders?
Yes, Mayor. Just a curious question. I've had three people in conversation ask me about it, even though they're not in my ward. On South Odom, the sides of the road and the medians in several spots are almost knee high. I drove through yesterday and they still weren't done. But I'm having a real problem because I had one person even ask me, well, how can you, how can you have a law that says I got to mow my yard when you're not taking care of your business? And I said, well, I can answer that, but I will ask the question. So is there a reason why we're not mowing areas on South Odom?
Well, we are. So the South Odom is taken care of as of today. Someone notified me yesterday. And so what happened was is we fell behind with the rain and we haven't caught up. It hasn't been wet in a while, but we really just haven't caught up with everything that needed to be done. And I was, I was speaking to Mike Hogan, Director of Public Works today about that and trying to say, well, it's just not acceptable for it to grow that tall. And I, I don't know who told you that statement about, you make me mow my lawn. But you guys don't need to do, that has been my biggest pet peeve ever since I moved to Monmouth was someone getting sited for grass, then you go out to the public areas and the city hasn't taken care of it. So it's been a little bit frustrating for me trying to get that done. Y'all may recall, we did add some extra employees to public works and sanitations this year to try and tackle that. And so I'm, I am working with public works to try and sort that out. It is mowed right now and is a great way for folks to hop on to fix. If you haven't used that, just hop on, post something, report it. And one of the benefits of that is it not only goes to that appropriate department head, but it also allows me to keep up with and monitor that. It's really an unacceptable way for the grass to, to be. It shouldn't be that long. And the best I can say is we're working on trying to figure out how to do it. We do have, for those that don't know, I mean, we have mowing crews that are mowing every day and that's all they're doing. And that includes people on riding mowers as well as an entire crew of people with weed eaters and smaller handheld tools. Obviously, when the ground's real wet, it changes things up because we're not running. We don't want to rut up the grass. We'll get, it'll look just as bad if we do that. So it's an ongoing issue that we're trying to solve.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I thank you. You gave me a good argument. Or not an argument, you gave me a good comeback as to why it's not being done. I understand we've had a lot of rain in the last few months. So, but, but I appreciate that they're starting to mow it today. It's just, I saw it yesterday. So.
Yeah. No, it's, it's an unacceptable condition. And that's citywide and systemic, and it's a reoccurring problem that we're trying to sort out.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Any additional council member comments? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney? I heard you through that wall right there say that you have no comments this time. Is that correct?
That is correct. No comments this time.
City Clerk Timmons?
I do. I wanted to let you all know about the 86 summer Arkansas Municipal League Conference. You guys may be aware, but to those who are not, they have decided to hold the conference this year. It's going to be done virtually. If anyone, you can certainly register yourself. There's, there's no fee for this. But if you need my assistance, just shoot me an email and I'll be happy to do it for you. If you can attend some, but not all, take a look at it and I can help you with it. Or you can go online and register yourself. The dates of the summer conference this year are going to be the 19th through the 21st of August. And that is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. And with that, I would overturn a motion to adjourn. I heard it from Councilmember Vapurzian. Did I hear a second? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.